To this candidate forum for candidates in the November election for Madam Media School Board. I'm Mary Santi, I'm from White Bear Township and I'm a member of the league. I'll be moderating this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that does not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. We sponsor forums like this to let you, the voters, have a chance to hear the candidates' views before the November election. So a few ground rules that we will follow. All the candidates were invited and all of them are here. The program will be recorded in its entirety and then it will be put on our YouTube channel tomorrow morning and also there will be a link to it at our LWV local website, which is www.lwv-wbla.org. The questions we received online and we received very many of them ahead of time. They have been screened to make sure they are not personal in nature and they're not, they apply to this forum. And we consolidated questions in the same topic, so if your question particularly wasn't answered, I hope we get to the gist of it in the questions. So for the format, the candidates do not have opening statements, but they will have questions starting right away. They have one minute to answer a question and then after all the candidates have answered the question, they may have one minute for a rebuttal if they choose. And if you want a rebuttal, raise your hand. I can see hands not on the screen, not on the little chat board. They will be timed and you saw the timer has thirty seconds, fifteen seconds and then stop. And then at the stop, you can finish your sentence. And so the order of speaking for the first question will be alphabetical. And after that, I'll rotate in a random grid that I have. And then in the, there'll be closing statements in the reverse order of the opening. So let me introduce the candidates and they are Barb Black, Paul Donna and Tony Vassoni. Can I have your pronunciation?
Vassoni, you did a great job, Vassoni.
Vassoni. Alright, and so we'll begin with the very first question. Since we didn't have opening statements, it kind of mirrors an opening statement. And we'll start with Barb Black. Describe your background and community involvement.
I moved to Madam Media about thirty years ago for the excellent schools. And I have had children in the school system. I have three sons and they've been in the school system since 2000. And we've been involved from early childhood all the way on through high school graduations. I had one graduate in 2016, one in 2018 and one in 21. So I've got a lot of recent experience with the schools and I've been involved as a parent. I've worked in the kindergartens and the classrooms, elementary schools and the playgrounds with their track and field days at the end of the year. I've also been in the middle school helping in home act with their sewing, in the science classroom dissecting fetal pigs and attending middle school dances as chaperone, attending school concert plays, meetings. I've been an involved parent, but pretty much in the background, but supporting my students and the school is the best way I could.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Paul Donna.
Thank you. Now essentially, a very engaged parent. My wife Angie and I have four kids. We've got two kids that have since graduated from Madam Media Schools, two kids that are still in the district, freshman and sophomore at the high school. Combined, if we add up total all the years of school district experience, it's about thirty-nine years. We've, I've certainly witnessed a lot of the strengths and challenges that our district has had. Like Barb, a longtime volunteer in the district, youth lacrosse, strategic plan participant, the RBI club for the high school baseball and longtime trustee and current president of the Madam Media, Madam Media Area Education Foundation. I have a public finance background. I lead school boards and city councils with their funding needs. I understand school financials and credit analysis as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Tony Vassoni.
First of all, I just wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this and everyone who's taking the time to watch this. I've been an active volunteer in our schools. I have a sixth grade daughter and a fourth grade son. I have a strong voice of elementary students on our board, which currently no board member has. I currently serve as the treasurer of the Madam Media School Board. I've been a past president of PTO. I've led various different committees and activities through my engagement with the PTO. I've been an active volunteer on district level committees. I've been part of the district curriculum advisory committee for over six years. I am a strong advocate for early childhood and have been a member of the parent advisory committee when my kids were little. I'm also a Cub Scout pack, Cub Master for PAC eighty-nine. And I just look forward to having a great discussion with everyone this evening.
Thank you. So any rebuttals, raise your hand or we'll go on to the next question. And the first one to speak will be Tony Vassoni and then Barb Black and then Paul Donna. So Tony, what issues are you most passionate about and what are your plans to address them?
I'm passionate about opportunities for students to achieve. My goal is to make sure every student can define, discover and demonstrate personal excellence. And that's, we're doing that right now. One of the examples we have is we're currently looking through restructuring how the school day works at the secondary level. Because we know that when mandates come down and more classes are required for students, it takes away electives. So we're looking to how can we change that school day to get those electives back for students? So I'm always going to be a champion for following our strategic plan and being an advocate for that and looking to give students the best opportunity so that they can achieve their potential.
Now Barb Black.
I, my, the issues that are most important to me are restoring academic excellence to our schools. Our schools have been slipping in proficiency for like the last six or seven years. And right now we have some real, some real issues with proficiency. Thirty-three percent of our students are not proficient in math. Thirty-two percent are not proficient in reading and a whopping thirty-eight percent are not proficient in science. So I really feel like we need to bring our scores back up. So that's probably my first priority is restoring the academic excellence that we had previously because we were, you know, always in the top couple of numbers of schools and we are dropping in those numbers, but also in our students are losing. I'm also interested in establishing policies that support positive and inspiring ways for our kids to learn and also increasing the academic and fiscal transparency from the district to the parents and the community members.
Thank you. Then Paul Donna.
I agree with Barb. I'm passionate. I think our number one goal, we need to refocus Madam Media Schools on academic excellence. We need to address the learning loss that has taken place certainly from the pandemic. But if we look back five years, our, like Barb indicated, our scores have only declined. We've changed our math scores have gone down eighteen percent in five years. Our science score is twenty-one percent. Our reading scores over fourteen percent over five years. We need to address, readdress that. We also need to reengage our community. We were built, this community, this school district was built on valuing parents' input. We have lost numerous, over forty families have lost, have moved children outside of our district. At least one child in the last two years, legacy families included in that. Generational families that have more than two generations of kids in the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the next question, we begin with Barb.
Mary, can I have a rebuttal?
Oh, yes. Yes, you may, Tony. Tony Vassoni.
I just want to be very clear about this concept of academic excellence and this notion of decline. Because the last time the Minnesota Department of Education released graduation rates, Madam Media was number one ranking ninety-nine percent of all students graduating from our Madam Media class compared to the eighty-four percent for the state average. On top of that, we're talking about exceeding expectations. Seventy-five percent of our students participate in AP courses and we've grown to over fifty percent of our students taking college in the classroom courses. And they're not only thriving and doing amazing things, but eighty percent of all the students who take AP classes are getting above a three on their AP exam. So I just want to remind everyone, our students are doing amazing things. Yes, the pandemic was hard and we have to keep working to improve, but we are improving and we can keep doing amazing things in the future.
Paul Donna, rebuttal, yes?
Yes, thank you. Yes, graduation scores, graduation rates are high relative to other districts. However, I didn't move here. I don't think most of the community's members moved here just so our kids could graduate Madam Media. We demand excellence at Madam Media Schools and our test scores have slipped. There's been certainly a change over the last five years evidenced by people moving their kids out of our district. We need to make a change and we need to address it now. There's too much invested from all of us on this forum and the community at large. Thank you.
Any further? Okay, we'll go on to the next question. And for this one, Barb Black will start, Tony Vassoni follow and then Paul Donna will finish. Are you satisfied with the health and safety protocols, including masking, that were established to mitigate the spread of COVID? Please explain.
I think we all would agree that health and safety is important for our students. I am not in favor of the masking requirements. I think that there isn't enough statistical information that shows that the masks make a big difference. I have a nursing background and I worked for many years with patients who were at high risk for infection. So I've actually worked with reverse isolation where I had to wear the masks and the gloves and the gowns to protect the patient. And current masks that we use, they're not going to prevent this tiny, tiny virus from spreading in our schools. They don't have good seals. We don't have good mask protocol. I really think that the goal of keeping our children safe is great, but I don't think masks are the way to get there.
Thank you. Next, Tony Vassoni.
What I'm really concerned about is how do we support the whole student? I'm really worried about our students' academic, social, emotional and mental wellness needs. And we, I know that the best way to support that whole student concept is to make sure that they're in the classroom. And to achieve this, we need to continue to consult with public health experts to follow the best practices so we can maximize their in-learning experiences. Thank you.
And then Paul Donna.
Yes, certainly. Health and safety is a priority and should be a priority for everybody. I, with regards to masks, I do not agree with the mandate on masks. I firmly believe that masking should be left to the parents to decide on the experts that they trust and the science that they believe in. I believe it should be up to the parents to choose whether they mask their children or they don't mask their children, frankly. So that's my commission, position with respect to masks. As far as safety in the classrooms in the school district, I think we do a great job. Communications, communication is good. We've got a police presence that certainly helps. And so I don't believe we have any issues with safety with regards to any threats. We handle them very well.
Anything further? Go to the next question, which we will start with Paul Donna, then Tony Vassoni and then Barb Black.
Barb has a rebuttal.
Oh, okay. Rebuttal.
I just wanted to mention that I agree with Paul. It should be up to the parents to decide what's the best for their child. I'm not opposed to people wearing masks if they want their children wearing masks, but I think it should be up to the parent to decide what is right because they know their child's medical condition, their family situation and what risk factors their child may have in school. So I just think I trust parents to make that decision rather than having it mandated.
Any further? Okay, now go to the next question, which will start Barb Black, then Tony Vassoni and then Paul Donna. How would you define the role of school board member?
Well, I think the role of, the role of a school board member is somebody who is supposed to lead in the community. The community has, will elect a school board member to be their voice with the school district. And we trust that the school board will be responsible fiscally and that they will do the very best to make sure that our kids have the best education possible. And whether or not a person has children in this school system, they really rely on the school board because having good schools makes our community stronger. It also helps retain our property values and also helps prepare our students to be engaged in the community and be prepared for the future and be able to be good citizens because they have a good education. So I think this role of the school board is to look at the education, the curriculum, the finances and to listen to the community and provide the best education they can for the kids in the community.
Okay, and I said, Tony, you were going to be next.
Yes. The goal of the board is to focus on student achievement. We do this through advocacy, policy, listening, leading with vision while being responsible fiscal stewards of the district resources. It takes commitment and professional development to be an effective board member. I have spent time completing Minnesota School Boards Associations for phases of training, of which only one is required by state statute to be a school board member. I have read books and continued to work to be the best board member I can be by continuing to improve through any board development and professional development I can get access to. The other thing that we need to do is to lead with ethics and I follow our board's policy two oh nine, which is our code of ethics as a school board member. And I think it's really important that we follow those ethics to be a good school board member. The reason I do this is that our community, faculty and students deserve a high achieving school board so that they in turn can succeed.
You. Paul Donna.
Yes, the rule, the role of the school board is to lead our district, is to lead the Madam Media Schools. We represent the families with children in the district. We also represent families and folks that live in the district that don't have kids here. So it's a leadership position. We establish policy, we oversee a fifty million dollar budget and we hold our administration accountable. That is, that is the primary role of the school board. Thank you.
Any follow-up? Okay, go to the next question. We'll start with Tony Vassoni, Barb Black and then Paul Donna. Do you support the renewal of the technology levy?
Thanks for that question. The renewal of the Capital Projects Tech Levy is essential for us to support and pass. It provides the needed stability the district has made in technology investments to allow the district to pursue innovative uses of technology to provide exceptional learning experience for our students. It also balances my effort to be a fiscally responsible steward of taxpayer funds. This tech levy renewal maintains the tax rate. It does not increase the tax rate on this levy at all. And that's really important to remember. That tax rate has been in existence since two thousand and two and we know that technology has gotten, gone forward through leaps and bounds since, I mean, that's before the iPhone was invented, for example. So together, having that fiscal, that financial stability is going to be really allow that innovation to take place in the classroom. So Madam Media can continue to be a leader in learning. Thank you.
And then who's left? Paul?
Sure. I as well support the tech levy. In fact, I participated in a, in an overview video that the district published, providing information related to that tech levy. Yeah, let's face it, the future of K twelve education is moving more and more every day to be digital. COVID nineteen demonstrated the importance, importance of having up-to-date technology. Overall though, technology in schools is vital. It increases student engagement. It helps our teachers improve their lesson plans. It facilitates personalized learning and effectively teaches essential twenty-first century skills to our children. So I certainly do support the tech levy. Thank you.
Barb Black.
I am, I don't know that I support it and I'm not sure that I oppose it. I question the timing of this levy renewal. I think levies should be done in election years when either, even election years when more voters are out there. I think it's interesting that this isn't off-year. The other factor that I'm considering is in transparency, the district is telling people that it doesn't raise their taxes. Well, while that's true, a no vote for the levy will actually reduce people's taxes. And I know there are a lot of taxpayers right now whose family budgets are stretched. I'm not sure that the district came through as promised on the levy in twenty eighteen, which incidentally that twenty eighteen levy is also in existence and our taxes will be going up in twenty-five and in twenty-two. So we have a tax increase coming in twenty-two from the levy we passed in twenty eighteen. And I haven't seen information from the district that shows me that we absolutely need this levy this year. I suggest it should be done next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Tony Vassoni, rebuttal?
I just wanted to provide some background information. If the tech levy doesn't get renewed this year, it's on a ten-year term and that's why it's coming up for election this year. If it doesn't get renewed, that funding will be lost and we will not have that technology levy, technology money that we've had since two thousand and two moving forward until we pass a new technology levy. So that's kind of why it's on the ballot this fall. Thank you.
No one further? We'll go on to next question and we'll start with Tony Vassoni, Barb Black.
I think Barb had a.
I missed your hand, so go ahead, Barb.
Sorry about that. I would just like to point out that I'm not opposed to technology, but just because we might lose the funding for a year, I'm not sure that's the reason why we should vote for a tax increase. It's seven point four million over the next ten years. I would like to see the district justify why we need it and I'm not opposed to it if we do. But just because we don't want to lose the levy, that doesn't seem, the funding for one year doesn't seem like an issue to me. I'd like to see it justified and taxpayers get a chance to really look at why we need it. Thank you.
Any further? Alright, now we'll go to the next question. And starting with Tony Vassoni, Barb Black and then Paul Donna. How would you go about making Madam Media Schools more inclusive and responsive to the needs of minority and vulnerable students?
Thank you for this wonderful question. I look back to the strategic plan, which I was on the planning team to help set up and this was a discussion that we talked about immensely and it, if you go to our beliefs, we believe that diversity strengthens community and individuals. All the voices deserve to be honored and each person has a measurable worth. So we need to make sure that we are providing windows and doors. That's a term that I got from Ms. Mancini, a seventh grade English teacher, when she was doing a unit, reading books with her students. The students were looking to see if windows, who they see outside of that perspective from themselves and mirrors, how they see themselves as different characters. And we need to make sure we have mirrors for all our students to feel supported and included into our community because I know we're all stronger together. Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Black.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering about the question because what happened here. I believe that, I believe that Madam Media is inclusive and I think our families are very welcoming. I have seen, I haven't seen any, any signs of things that make me feel like our community excludes any members of our community. I think there's involvement and encouragement for all of our students. So I, the premise of that we need greater inclusivity is a question to me. I'm not opposed to it. I think we should welcome all students and everybody should get treated well. Everybody should get treated with dignity and respect and we should be kind and have a wonderful school environment. I believe we should include everyone, but I don't know that we aren't doing that at this point.
Thank you. Paul Donna.
Yeah, I agree with Barb. The premise of that question assumes that our schools are not inclusive and we're not. We are not addressing vulnerable students. For as long as we've been in the district with our four kids, I have, I have not heard that taking place. I've not seen it taking place. Certainly there are certain, there are things that take place at school where there could be bullying and things like that, but you know, that goes on everywhere and I'm not so sure that, that could be, that's a function of, of not being inclusive or helping our vulnerable students. So our small, our small community, our small school is a great support and a great asset that will help us ensure that our kids feel included and supported if they don't. So.
Thank you. Response? Okay, we'll go to the next question. And this one will be first Paul Donna, then Tony Vassoni and then Barb Black. And the question is, how can the school board ensure that a community, that the community has a voice in discussions regarding the direction of the district?
Thank you. That's certainly one of the items I listed as being passionate about. First and foremost, there's three items on my, on my list. We need to reconstitute and reevaluate the committees that we have in place for our community representation in the district. The state of Minnesota requires a citizen, a curriculum advocate committee. It also requires it to, or recommends that two-thirds of those on the committee are representative parents. Currently, that committee is represented only at a twenty-five percent level versus the recommended sixty-six percent level. We need to reevaluate the committees that we have in place and make sure parents are represented. Public forums, we have to ensure that public forums are always available. During the pandemic, our public forum was shut down. It was only allowed through email. Through the biggest crisis our school district has ever faced, our public forum was shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Tony Vassoni next.
Mary, can you repeat that question for me? I want to make sure I understand it correctly.
How would you go about making Madam Media Schools? No, that's how can the board ensure the community has a voice in discussions regarding the direction of the district?
I think this is a really important piece to have the community engaged and it's really important work. We've actually spent a lot of time at our study session this last couple of weeks ago, in the September study session, talking about this as a board. And it's really important to understand that there's different levels of engagement that we're going to ask of the community. There can be informational engagement all the way up to the community voting and making decision and the whole spectrum in there between. So we've been working hard to work on process changes to allow these feedback loops for the community to come in. And the best way for the community to get involved is there's a whole bunch of different committees that are open to all the public. We want them there. We want to do our, our business in the public eyes and we need people out listening and coming to our meetings and participating and engaging us. I listen to emails. I want to talk to people in the community. And changing these processes are really going to be important step moving forward to engage our community moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Barb has a chance to speak.
Okay. Alright, well, one of the reasons I put my name forward for the school board is because I feel like the current school board is not listening to families. They are half of our board, a number of our board are educators and they have their own union to represent the teachers. But families don't have a voice and I don't believe they're being listened to. So So that is one of the reasons I ran. Now, the, there's three seats open for one candidate. And two of us believe in, in, um, giving the families a greater voice and seeing a change in the board. And so therefore, I, I have talked with Paul, and he and I share a lot of similar values and goals for our district. And the best thing that we can do to, to get families' voice heard is to have a voice on the board. And so therefore, even though my name is on the ballot and it can't be removed, I plan to support Paul Donna, and I don't intend to do any, um, campaigning. I can't have my name taken off the ballot, but I think it's incredibly important that we have a voice for families on the board.
Thank you. Uh, and Paul Donna would like a rebuttal?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, to ask the question of the school board, whether or not, how, how, how have they gone about trying to reengage families that have less, left the district in the last two years? Um, have we found out anything as to why they're leaving, and have we addressed that? Because I, as, as far as I know in talking with folks, uh, that's not taking place.
Anything further? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and then we'll go first to Tony Vasuni, then Paul Donna, and then Barb Black. Uh, should the district continue to offer open enrollment, and why?
Thanks, Mary, for that question. Open enrollment has always been used as a tool because the Minnesota State families believe strongly in having school choice. There's going to be a lot of reasons why various families will choose different schools. And it's been this, um, study over the years that families want to choose to come to Montomeda, whether moving here or open enrolling their students. Once you're here as a student, I view you as a Zephyr. It doesn't matter if you necessarily live in our boundaries. But we have to use it as a smart tool. We can't use open enrollment to fix problems, but it does help us maintain the exceptional programming and experiences we have to offer.
Thank you. Paul Donna.
Yes, uh, in fact, we came to the district originally as, as open enrollees and then moved to the district. Um, it's part, open enrollment, uh, needs to be a net benefit to the district. Uh, and you can quantify that benefit financially. You can also quantify that benefit by, uh, making sure, by using those funds, um, to leverage programming for the district as a whole. Uh, there's a sweet spot, um, that can, and a balancing point that needs to be studied and constantly analyzed to make sure that the inherent cost of, of open enrollment financially is resulting in a net benefit overall, uh, to the district.
And Barb Black.
I, I agree with Paul that we need to look into open enrollment and study it a little bit. Um, we have, we, the goal of open enrollment was to keep our, our schools in a position where we could offer quality and offer programming that if our district got too small, we may not be able to offer. I don't know how we decided, the district somewhere along the line, the school board decided the proper number that they wanted for students, and I'm wondering if that really needs to be reevaluated. Um, uh, looking at, at, um, our buildings, um, two of our, our school buildings, one is O H and one is, um, Wildwood, those buildings right now are, have more students in the buildings than their capacity is rated by the, by the district. I think we need to look at that, and we also need to look at the fact that we have twenty-eight percent open enrolled student, students. And the differential between what the state gives our schools and the, and what we are spending on them is about five thousand a student. So with two hundred, with eight hundred and eighty-four open enrolled students, times five thousand, that's a lot of money for our taxpayers, and I'm wondering if we're getting the best value.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, uh, we'll go to the next question, and we'll go in the same order you started. Barb Black, Paul Donna, and Tony Vasuni. What effect has remote learning during the last school year had on student progress? Have some students been more significantly affected? And if so, how and what can be done to overcome learning deficits?
That's a great question, and I think our district should be focusing on that. I think they should be focusing on identifying which students are, are falling more behind, or which are falling behind, which aren't meeting the standards. I know my son struggled greatly with, uh, distance learning. It was very difficult, you know, complete technical problems, computer pro, problems. And also, they're not engaged in the classroom with the teacher and other students. And I'm concerned at what kind of a deficit is going to happen, especially for our youngest students who really need that hands-on interaction with the teachers. And we need to give them a good foundation so that they concede to, or can succeed throughout their school years, and we need to give them a good, solid education, and we need to catch them up. And I'm, think our district should really be focusing on that.
Thank you. Paul Donna.
Yes, a great question, and frankly, I'm disappointed in how our district has handled, uh, the loss of learning due to the pandemic. Um, and frankly, I'm not quite sure how we, how we have addressed it. Um, I, I think what needs to be done, as you indicate, what we, what needs to be done is we need to identify where we are lacking. We can't move to algebra two without having, being proficient in algebra one. Uh, we need to create, uh, perhaps different schedules as needed to extend the time of learning in the core classes that we need, math, science, and reading. And that may come at the expense of some electives or study hour, but we need to extend that time to, to become proficient. We need to provide catch-up courses for students who are lacking. And certainly, uh, resources are tied, I understand, but that's probably going to take, adding to staff. Uh, but that's the four-pronged approach that I would, uh, think that we would need to address the learning loss that occurred because of the pandemic. I'm not sure, quite frankly, what we've done.
Thank you. Tony Vasuni.
Yeah, this is a, a really important question, and obviously, the COVID pandemic's been hard on families. But during this pandemic, we've also always, as a school board, been working to promote in-person learning when it's safe to do so. We've pushed back on different guidelines and regulations so that we could bring in students that were struggling back into the high school during the day to get extra support services during the pandemic. At the end of the year, we were able to get kids back into classrooms, and we're starting this year with kids in classrooms. Keeping kids safely in classrooms is the number one way that we can address this, this loss of learning that is being talked about and these difficulties COVID, um, faced with us. But we also have to look at our data and look and see what standards were missed, and what standards we excel that. And then we can move forward with that data to make those adjustments needed, so our teachers have that in, information in front of them. And I trust our teachers to be able to get our students to where they need to be. Thank you.
Barb Black, follow-up?
Yeah, I, I've been looking at some of the district, uh, statistics, and one thing that surprises me and, um, is of concern is that since twenty sixteen, we have lost fifteen teachers. And that's a lot of teachers to lose. And so I think we need to really focus on getting, getting the number of teachers up. Our student, our number of students have not fallen greatly since twenty sixteen. They've been almost consistent. But according to the Minnesota Department of Education website, we have fifteen less teachers. In twenty sixteen, we had two hundred and forty-one teachers, and this year, in twenty twenty, which is the last year I, there are statistics available, we were dropped down to two hundred and twenty-six teachers in our district. We have great teachers, but maybe we need a few more of them.
Any further? Paul Donna.
Yeah, I, I agree. We, the data will be telling, but I, I do think we have, uh, some of that data, and we, we should, we should have been using that data to address it. Our math scores, uh, are at, our proficiency scores are six, sixty-six percent. Uh, science is sixty-two percent, reading is sixty-eight percent. We've never been that low in the last five years that I've, just in the last five years, we haven't been that low. Um, so the data's there. What we need to focus on, I'm not sure, uh, we've got the plan to approach, to address it yet.
And I just want, I just wanted to reiterate that, like, this is not just a problem that's unique to Montomeda. This is being studied across the nation. And while the, the data is still coming in and being used at a local level, I can share from my professional development that the learning loss in math and, um, reading are actually less on a national scale than what they are originally predicting from the educational experts. This is something that's been shared through various professional development workshops. And we need to, we need to appreciate, our students have done amazing work. It's been very challenging. Our families have done amazing work, and so have our teachers. We are going to get through this. This isn't something that just hit Montomeda. This hit everywhere, and our students are going to be supported, and we're going to get through this together.
Thank you. All right, the next question, we start with Tony Vasuni, then Barb Black, and then Paul Donna. What is your position on transgender students and athletics? Specifically, do you support transgender students being allowed to play with the gender they identify as? Or would you mandate they play with the gender they were assigned at birth?
Thank you for the question, Mary. I'm going to broaden this a little bit because the LGBTQ plus community is something that needs to be supported, and tonight you'll probably notice that I'm using my pronouns on the screen. That's because I've learned through my professional development that using my pronouns significantly decreases the rates of suicides in transgender youth. And we need to support students because transgender youth are facing an epidemic of suicide, and we need to support that. And the simplest way we can do that is just recognize them and use their pronouns. In terms of sports and athletics, I view this as more of a privacy concern. What we need to look at is how do we support students? Because changing rooms and locker rooms and bathrooms, what we just need to do is invest in making more individual stalls, so students have the right to feel the privacy that they, they're asking for. So, thank you.
You, Barb Black.
Hi. My feelings on this subject is that I think we should follow the science, and I believe in biology, and I believe that our biological girls should be competing with biological girls. They should, and, um, they shouldn't be, um, forced to compete with genetically, genetic males who have, uh, advantages in both, in their physicality and their strength and in their power and their muscle structure. I think that it's, it's, it's a very dis, big disservice to our girl, to the, the girls in athletics to have to compete with biological men or biological boys. So I support, um, having biological girls compete with other biological, logical girls.
Paul Donna.
I, I, I agree with, uh, Barb's, uh, that they should play with the gender that they were, were assigned to at birth. Uh, that does not mean that we do not support, um, the transgender community. It doesn't, that does not mean we do not support um, any of those children and, um, the difficulties that they have, uh, growing up. Uh, but when it comes down to competition in athletics, uh, the, you follow the science, like Barb said. We've heard that term a lot. We follow the science, and, uh, girls, biological girls play against biological girls, biological boys play against biological boys. Thank you.
Any follow-up? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and, uh, Barb Black will start, uh, Tony Vasuni next, and then Paul Donna. What must schools do to navigate increasingly diverse, diverse at student and community populations?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Can, can you be a little more specific what?
Uh, these questions came from people outside our league, so, uh, we didn't try to interpret them. So I would interpret as best you can. That's that your student population is increasingly diverse, and how will you navigate it?
Well, I think diversity is a good thing, and I'm not sure how, that we have, what we have to navigate with it. I think we should look at our students as individuals and look at how they're doing educationally, and we should support them in becoming proficient in math and science and reading, and to be able to pursue, uh, excellence in their academics. And diversity is great, but I'm not so sure what your question is about it. I think all students need to be, um, have their educational needs addressed.
Okay, Tony Vasuni.
Well, one thing that the state of Minnesota does lead in is, um, the education gap. Um, which is something that we need to work on, and I do strongly support education equity. You know, making sure all students have what they need in order to succeed. I support the Montomeda schools and doing, working with the Equity Literacy Institute, um, which is just recognizing inequities and trying to address them at the root cause. And I also support all the different education associations that recently came out on September thirteenth with a press release talking about the importance of education equity work, and the underlying goal is educational equity is giving all students a world-class education.
Paul Donna.
Sure, I'm not drawing a parallel, though, between, uh, a diverse population in our classrooms, in our school, with the equity question. I, I'm not, I, you know, just bottom line, every, uh, diversity is, is great. Um, it's, uh, it exposes our kids to different cultures, uh, different, um, families. Um, it, it, it helps them grow in their development and open up their minds. Um, but every child in the school district, no matter what their background, needs to be treated with respect and compassion, and provided the tools to succeed, uh, once they graduate Montomeda High School.
Anything further? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and we start with Tony Vasuni, then Paul Donna, and then Barb Black. So, Tony, in their civics education instruction, how important is it for students to experience civic engagement, experience it, and how might students acquire such experience?
This is a very good question. Civic engagement's actually rooted into our strategic plan. Um, learning how to live in democracy is, is critically important. One of the things that we are learning right now is that the importance of learning how to disagree in a democracy is critically important. We can have different views. We can have different backgrounds, but we have to have one goal. And if we're working through a democracy in schools, that goal is student achievement, and we all have to work together towards that goal to find solutions. Um, the best way that they can participate in our classrooms, we can get them into school board meetings, city hall meetings. Um, I, one thing that we do promote at our schools is students have engaged in, um, civic walkouts, and the school has been supportive of letting students use their voice, how they see fit to support the causes that they, they view important to themselves. Thank you.
Paul Donna.
Uh, certainly civics is a, um, I think it's a lost value, uh, quite frankly, on, on our youth. Um, and, and that starts with us as leaders. Um, I, I do, you know, with all the school board meetings and city council meetings I attend, it's always great to see students, uh, being represented at, at those various meetings uh, from their respective school districts and, and city councils. Uh, that's, it's an important part of, of growing up, and like Tony indicated, learning the values of, of democracy. Um, and we need to do a better job as leaders to promote that. Um, and, um, discuss that at, uh, in our social studies class, uh, going forward.
Thank you. Barb Black.
Well, I think that civic, uh, understanding civics and understanding our government and democracy and how the, um, how the world works in terms of, uh, civics is really important to build good citizens. I'm concerned that this shift from the school has gone from, um, understanding civics to creating academic activists. And I, I was very frustrated and disappointed last year when we had such, so minimal hours in school that our school district would have students leave class to be activists and have a protest, rather than be engaged in the classroom and learn. rather than be engaged in the classroom and learning. I think we need to focus on educational excellence and not be going to academic activism.
Thank you. Anything further? Paul Donna.
Yeah, I alluded to being as leaders, we need to demonstrate that practice. I believe it's a district policy that the Pledge of Allegiance be recited or at least allowed, allow for kids to recite at least one time a week, which I think is fantastic. But, but I do not, I have not seen or heard of any of our school board meetings leading with the Pledge of Allegiance. That's a common practice across, across the, the, the country. It demonstrates civics, it unites you at the beginning of a meeting because this is a country that we are representing and doing the good work for. We're a subset of of the state of Minnesota. I don't see why we, we can't set an example ourselves that we require of our students and recite the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of a board meeting.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, we'll go on to our next question. And it will go first to Paul Donna, Tony Vasouni, and Barb Black. Do you think that public comments should be included in the video of the school board meetings? Paul Donna.
Yes, absolutely, I do. That's part of, that's part of a, a major concern of mine is that the community needs to be engaged. The community needs to be heard. And if there's many, many folks who just can't attend a school board meeting, and they, we have the opportunity to watch it on video, which is, which is great. But certainly, the public forum content of a school board meeting should be included in the replay video. Absolutely.
Tony Vasouni.
Thanks for the question. I think it's important to understand the role of comments to the school board. The school board gets comments and feedback in multiple ways, phone calls, meetings, emails. And one of the ways that we use is that the public isn't allowed to give comments to the board. The comments aren't there to be a public forum for the whole world to disseminate. It's there for the community to be able to engage the board members on action items that are presented at a school board meeting. It's really important to understand that difference. It's not that we don't want people to be engaged in the community. We want to hear from the community, but we want to honor that there's multiple ways that we can, the community can engage a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Black.
I would have to say that I agree with Paul, and I'm really disappointed that our school board meetings that the, the videos do not show public comment. As, as Paul said, not all of us have the time to be there in person, but I think we're, we're losing transparency when we don't show what parents are bringing to the board as concerned, because we probably may share those return concerns. And I think that in, it's important that we see, have our comments, the public's comments given credit and that we can see what's going on. Too often, you know, I've made, I've tried to reach the board and I had, whenever I call the school, I talk to a teacher or a principal, I get a call back. But I've left phone messages for school board members that I haven't heard back from. I've sent emails to them and I haven't heard back. And I think that the very least that they should be showing on the video what the public comments are for the school board. I think that answers the question.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, this is going to be our last question, and it will be first Paul Donna, then Barb Black, then Tony Vasouni. Why are you the best candidate for the school board?
That's a good question. And I need to, I only have a minute to sum it up. I better get going. Certainly, I have, I have the leadership skills. I've, I've led an organization, participated a long time and led an organization in MAF. I have the professional skills with working with school boards, leading them through financial issues, capital improvement, programming, credit analysis. And I have the, the experience, the combined experience with all four kids going through our schools of like I mentioned before, of over 38, over 38 years. So I believe that's why I'm the best candidate going forward for the Montomeda School Board.
Thank you. Barb Black.
Well, that's an interesting question because I, the reason I ran for school board is I thought we needed somebody with strong family values who was committed to educational excellence. And I filed on the last day of filing, as did Paul Donna, so I did not, I was unaware that he was running for school board. And I strongly believe that we need change in our school board. And again, since there are three candidates running for one spot, I'm going to support Paul Donna because I believe he could, he could lead our district, district and be a good leader and help us rebuild our schools and restore our academic excellence. I think that's so important to our community. I also believe that he will include the community and listen to the community and and be a good steward of helping our schools return to their excellence.
And Tony Vasouni.
I've demonstrated committed work and support of Montomeda schools. I'm a past president of the PTO. I've worked on various district committees. As treasurer of the board, I helped oversee a fiscally responsible budget that has increased its unfunded balance from the lows of 2.5% to a current rate of 9.5%, which is over the 8% budget that's set in board policy. And it indicates fiscal health and stability. I'm also, um, the Montomeda Education Association Executive Committee has recommended me as their candidate. I'm currently the only candidate on the board to have an elementary student. And I'm able to provide a voice for those families that would be otherwise missing without me. Thank you.
And if you didn't have enough time, you each have a time for rebuttal if you choose. Otherwise, we'll go to closing statements. You have one minute, and Tony Vasouni is to begin that.
My passion for education runs deep. My resume demonstrates that I'm dedicated to supporting the Montomeda community educators, and most importantly, our students. That is why the Montomeda Education Association Executive Board recommends me, voting for me this fall. In my 10 months as treasurer of the board, I've approved the fiscally stable budget, advocated Montomeda's needs to the legislature, use an equity lens to help ensure all students can get what they need in order to succeed, and champion the district strategic plan in my decision-making. I'm dedicated to continuing my board work through advocacy, policy, vision, and conversation so that all students have the opportunities to discover, define, and demonstrate personal excellence. My goal is to provide the structure for the amazing experience of being as effort. So when all students become young adults, they have the knowledge, abilities, and confidence to choose their own adventures in life and achieve their potential. I want to thank the Leva Women Voters for hosting this event and for everybody who's watching this discussion. A vote for Vasouni is a vote that is committed to seeing the high-functioning school board our Zephyr community and students deserve. Thank you.
You. Paul Donna.
Thank you. My wife Angie and I chose Montomeda schools for our children because Montomeda schools focused on academics. It valued families' input and their voice. And frankly, it was the best school that would prepare our kids for the real world. Unfortunately, you know, it's, it's time for us to stop patting ourselves on the back based on past achievement. We need to look at ourselves, we need to look at ourselves in the mirror. Montomeda schools is no longer the preferred school for parents in the surrounding area. A vote for Paul Donna will, will be a voice of change to bring back the years in which we built this district and achieved the success that we had and made it a destination school district. Together we can, and I hope you vote for me November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And Barb Black.
Okay, I would like to just repeat the fact that I, you know, same as Paul. We moved to this district for its excellence, and I see that slipping, and I really want to see that restored. I think we need to really focus on restoring our academic excellence and really work on establishing policies that promote positive, positive environment for our children and challenge them. And I think that we need to increase our transparency and and outreach to the community. And it troubles me to hear Tony tell me, say that the teachers' union is supporting him because the, the teachers have a union to support them. Our students and families need someone on the school board to be representing them. And I think we'd be doing a disservice to our community to add another person supported by the teachers on the school board opposed to somebody who's focusing on the needs of the families and the residents of the community. And we have great teachers, but I think that our school board needs to focus on the needs of the community families. And so therefore, I'm supporting Paul Donna.
Thank you, candidates, for putting yourselves forward and for participating in our forum tonight. Thank you for our host Heidi and our timekeeper Shannon, Sharon, and also to the viewers and for your wonderful questions. And remind you, you're going to be electing one school board member to the vacancy until January 2nd, 2023. So remember to vote November 2nd. Thank you.